We call this meeting to order and thank you everyone for being here at the Monticello City Council. We have already rendered our invocation and pledge of allegiance in our prime meeting. So we are down to item four, now public comment.
Bill Snyder.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Bill Snyder, Jefferson County resident, I just want to make a short announcement about America 250. On July 4th, 2026, we'll celebrate America's 250th birthday as the most free, most beloved, most envied, most stable nation in history, and there's reason for that. Constitution Alive is a 12 lesson video series on our Constitution and will be presented at the Social Restaurant in Monticello on 12 Saturday mornings, 9:00 to 10:30 a.m. in September through mid-November. 12 basic lessons on the Constitution on 12 consecutive Saturdays. This popular video series is known as a citizen's quick start guide to the Constitution and has been presented all over the nation since 2013. Please join us for class number 9,988. Free pocket constitutions for everyone, all elected officials are invited to share their thoughts on our 250th birthday and the Constitution. There's a QR code and a link for more info. Constitution Day is September 17th. Please spread the word and consider attending one or more sessions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder.
You're welcome.
All right, we shall proceed. Item five, consent agenda. Do they have a motion?
I move to approve July and all of council meetings.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. It's been properly moved in second that we accept the consent agenda. Item six, old business.
Oh, is it?
None?
Yeah.
Okay. Item seven, new business.
Okay, there's two items from the planning department. These are both signs. So the first one is the sign for the proposed Aldi grocery store. That is just a basic, so the map shows you two spots where it's going to be. One will be the sign on the building, which is labeled as number two on the little map they gave you. And then number one up by Burger King is the standing, free standing sign as shown. Both received recommendation for approval. Well, sorry, we're doing the one first. So the Aldis received recommendation for approval by the LPA. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Dogwood?
Do you want to approve the one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, do I hear motion for approval of the sign for Aldi?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's been properly moved in second that we accept the signage for Aldi grocery store.
Okay, and then the next one is the, so the mural that was painted on the corner of Dogwood and 19, the wildlife mural, that has a little sign that goes with it, provided from the Wildlife Porter Foundation. It's a small little green, it's about like this, and it's got a QR code so that people can take their phone when they're looking. What they wanted was while people look at the mural, they can see this, then they can right click, and then it'll give them information about the Florida Wildlife Corridor. And so between the Historic Design Review Board and the local planning agency and the building owner, everyone approved and recommended that it be approved by the council.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the wildlife mural sign as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
It's been properly moved in second that we approve this mural. Request to serve on the Historic Design Review Board, Ms. Connolly.
So you have a letter in there from Julie Connolly, her name in there for that board.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move.
Does Ms. Connolly want to say anything?
I just came in case you had any questions about my qualifications, and if you approve, just say thank you.
I'm gonna approve.
We're not going to have vigorous debate over this? Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. It's been properly moved. And second, that Ms. Julie Connolly will serve on Historic Design Review Board. You can make your speech now.
Thank you very much. Don't forget to thank the locals.
Thank you. What a beautiful addition to that board. Okay. Following is 2026 Jefferson County Delegation Meeting, September 8, 10 a.m. through 12 p.m. Designate a presenter for the city and appropriations request.
So I'll be attending that.
Yes.
I believe I saw that, were you going to attend, Mayor?
Yes, I'll attend.
Okay, and I don't know who else is planning to attend.
I'll be there.
Okay, I can speak to that thing. Now, what we should do is see what everyone has as far as ideas for appropriations. I'm currently trying to get a scope of work for Mulberry Street to fix that, like over by the Chicken Place to South Mulberry Street at that corner. So I was hoping, I'm hoping to get some sort of scope of work before the 8th so that I can, but really the appropriation applications don't need to be submitted until November, and they only just came out.
So DOT is not going to come through on that?
So I've received a deed from them where they say this is why they will not do anything about that, and then it's agreement between that church property owner, I don't recall if it's the current one or the past one, where DOT, and then they agree DOT would dig that open ditch and then leave it to the property owner if they want to make any changes to it. That open ditch is outside of our right of way, it's all on that property owner's property, and so DOT is sticking to that they will not assist with that. Now, the Carl Webworth, Webworth, the gentleman that owns the Chicken Place, he owned Cluckers and then he leased to the people that did Maryland Chicken. He's fixing his end of the problem right now with the storm drainage. So he took out a large pipe that was degraded and he replaced that, and he's added a bunch of dirt where the other pipe is. He is trying to work with the city and the church property owner so that the three of us collectively can get this worked out. So that's what's hard, is part of that drainage is on those two property owners, which is a large part of it, the ditches. And then once we have a good plan leading up to the corner, we can see what our problem is for fixing that road. We really just need everything in front of it to be fixed before we go and do that or it's going to ruin it again. So I think between the three of us, we can come up with a plan here soon. But I was going to try to present something at this meeting for and after this meeting, but the, on the 8th. So I'm hoping Kim Lee Horn is helping me come up with a scope of work for that.
Good.
That was one of my ideas for what to present to the delegation.
Well, I know that we'll be short on time, so I would like to leave all the requests to you.
That's fine. And this is kind of a, these are ideas we have, this doesn't have to be formal requests at this meeting. It'll be sort of just, thank you for what you've done, which is we've got the $500,000 from the legislative budget, that was in big part to Representative Allison Tan. So I'll be thanking for that and other things we've gotten, and then just kind of putting these things in the air so that they know we're going to be applying.
Good.
So are we going to ask for capital outlay?
Yes. And what we, all we need, all we know is that we need to avoid things like water and generators. So if we ask for things related to resilience and, you know, all of our paving problems, we'll be able to, I think we'll be able to get somewhere.
For the project that y'all was talking about the other meeting, is that going to be asked about the capital outlay?
Well, there's two options for that. One is to find a way to get it and then use that project, use that money to fulfill upgrading that place.
Wait, so I'm just adding, add that to the?
Yeah, we can.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, I guess that's all.
May I ask you something?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to mention that if, since you probably weren't really that prepared to come up with ideas tonight, as long as you do it at your October meeting, then in November, when you have to actually file the paperwork and say that it came up at a public meeting.
Yes.
So you really have another chance to talk about it here, because part of that application form says, you know, was this request considered at an open meeting? So if something comes up between now and October, or now and, yeah, October, you talk about it.
So I'll put ideas on paper in the meantime, and then we can bring it to the next council meeting before we submit our applications.
Great, great.
And Julie has offered to assist me with that, and so has Steve Woodgate.
Okay. Isn't that wonderful?
I'm cheaper than Steve.
Just keep it. Okay. All right. Item eight, reports to the council. Police chief?
Everything's in my executive summary, but I would just like to say that I attended a ceremony the other day for my captain's PITS graduation from an executive leadership course that he attended over a three-month period. The course was created and designed for leaders to make them better and one day make them better executives. So I would just like to just say thank you for the young man who is capable.
Wonderful, wonderful. All right. Our city manager?
So this Labor Day weekend, our guys went out, we had a, they did a great job. We had a leak off of South 19. Some people saw it in the paper. We put a boil water notice out because we had to shut down the water main. Then we'll be getting test back for that tomorrow, hopefully. There shouldn't be any issues, it's just when we shut the main off, soil can come into the lines, and so we have to do that. But that went great, they did a great job. We're also going to be sending out, we're sending out flowers to the family of Simon Williams, who used to be an employee of the city, has recently passed away. And so we're going to be sending flowers to the family. And we're also going to be looking into a new, our lease is ending for the Dogwood Street parking lot, and so I'm exploring other options for parking if that falls through, which is, that's kind of in the air right now between the city and the owner. And I'd like to do something else with that dumpster up there, too. So we've been working on trying to keep that dumpster clean. We started a lock system between us and Pops, where we gave the combination to all the business owners that are allowed to use that. That's slowly starting to help, it looks like we're still having some problems, so it's staying a little cleaner.
And I just, since this came up, I've been kind of making a point the last three Saturday mornings or so going by, just to see what the usage is, and probably six to eight cars at peak downtown times are using that lot. So that's what we're going to be losing is more or less that volume.
Yeah. That's currently, it was a nine-year agreement, that was $1,343 per year, plus an additional $415 to another owner. And the current owner, it's just, I don't think he's going to want to continue that , so. Yeah.
Can you give a status on all that issue or not?
So the owner is Al County, Al County Realty, or it's Mr. Scott McPherson, and he's upset with the city right now because of charges that we're telling him he has to pay, that everyone else has to pay. These are tap fees for apartments that were put in on Mississippi Street. There was also, we got the last payment for that parking lot to him late. That was supposed to be paid last October, and it wasn't, and so we just got that paid to him, so he was a little upset about that, too. So he's just not being, I don't think he wants us in the parking lot anymore.
So where does the old Huckleberries building stand? What's the issues on that?
Oh, that, there are no issues other than there was, remodeling began without permits. And so we had, in one day, we took stop work orders to that property into the Donut property, which is next to the bank. It's no longer the Donut.
Donut.
Yeah, it's not that anymore, but that is owned by Mr. Hohenstein, and then the Huckleberries is owned by Mr. McPherson or Al County, it might not be him specifically. We took stop work orders to both of those properties because there was work being done that was not permitted, and then we got a lot of backlash from both property owners, but we've been dealing with that, and so far they've been starting to cooperate. So one was cutting into the sidewalk without asking at all, and the other one was just going beyond what, the point where something does and does not need to be permitted, so. We haven't stopped them, we've just told them, please provide us this so you can continue.
And what about, any contact with Jack Carrowell about the?
I haven't, I have to check and see if he emailed me. I'd like, if you have a contact where I can call, that would be fantastic. Mr. Carrowell owns some property on the north side of the post office, right? And we'd like to talk to him about, I guess there might be some interest in allowing us to use that for parking. But I'd also like to talk to the church on the opposite, if that's First Baptist or First Methodist, I can't recall right now, the large area next to the chamber.
Baptist.
I'd like to talk to them about that whole parking area, too.
Great.
So just one point, where was the break on 19? Was it in the city or out of the city?
That was, oh, 19 was outside the city limits, but it's the things that we service, so.
I know, but it was outside.
Yeah, so the ones that were affected were at I-10. So it was mostly commercial. And that's, that's all I have on the permanent report.
Oh, right. Okay, our city attorney?
Nothing in particular, but I would like y'all to know, since you're all in the service area for North Florida College, they've just selected a new president. The former vice president, Dr. Jennifer Page, is stepping into the roles of Dr. John Grosskopf. They've been a client of my firm, NFC, for pretty much as long as anyone can remember over there, and they're good folks. They're really looking at stepping up the trade programs, so if you know any young folks that are interested in welding, trucking, EMT work, being nurses, anything like that, it's a good place to send them.
Okay. Good. Okay, and city deputy clerk?
Not that I can really come to mind, other than we are now looking for a utility clerk.
Yeah, our utility clerk, our utility clerk got another job as a teacher. So we're going to be hiring that, too. She was a teacher, and so she didn't wait to get back, but yeah, so we're a little, things are a little harder than they were.
Stretched even thinner, but other than that, we're staying the float as much as possible, honestly, with what the hands we're giving. That's pretty much it.
Okay. All right. Brian, it's on you.
So the only thing I have is I had looked for, we promised Kirk the three-month review, we're probably a little pass out now, but I looked for the form we used for the last review for Seth, I cannot find it in any of my files anywhere. I did not want to interrupt you guys to hunt for it right away, but at a certain point, what I'll probably do is get some printed up with everybody's name on them and ask one of these two to email everybody that they're available to come pick up and fill out, and maybe we can collect them. That's all I have.
Okay, it's my turn. I'm very grateful to have been able to attend the Florida League of Cities in Orlando, and the turnout was great, and for what the information we received, there was information from AI, the whole list, and quite, yes, AI is here, and we need to know about it.
Yeah, it's been, it's getting used everywhere.
Correct.
Government, schools, it doesn't matter.
Yes, yes, yes.
Those are the end of the approach.
Okay. All right. It's your time, Congressman Evans.
I'm just saying.
Oh, I see you're done.
I ain't doing this. I don't know, the other thing is I just, we did receive a call from Second Harvest for chief, and so we'll be having a free food giveaway this Friday. You might know you're going into the entrance of the cemetery, so we're going to need your services back to work, and we're going to need your services, chief.
Gotcha. Okay, Councilman Jones?
Chief, I can make a shout. The meeting at the Florida League of Cities, excellent information. It's reference, the big, we had a joint session meeting with all the committees, was the biggest issue is property tax, what the state want, and what they're doing, they're not telling people what. I have missed, but a couple other classes, I went to one with the schools with the radars in the school zones. I went to Dodge, is that how you pronounce that thing?
Yeah.
Dodge, that was about the sorries. I left out of that and went to another thing. Well, they had facilitate, he didn't know what he was talking about. I went to the one on safety, and I went to another, I went to two more. But the one on the property tax, I picked up some information from property, property president also. Even if it passed, still going to pay tax, but when they update, decide to cut, that's why we got it. The resident people got put pressure on Tallahassee, because if you don't, same thing, this dollar high split up. You can get the same, I'm going to have Angela come and give a shutdown next month meeting on this family information. But in the one where the, the Dodge, not the Dodge, but that other one I was just talking about, the property tax, here we go. The myth is that the plans give communities more control over their future, that's a lie. It's opposite. Anything they say is good on, the fact, it does the opposite. It centralized power in Tallahassee, giving special interests more, save our everyday residents lose their voice. And what they're doing every day that they can make a chance is to take away home rule, and that's what we have. Monticello and all the municipalities should be able to govern themselves without Tallahassee, sticking their toes and nose into it and try to tell the community. Don't nobody know the community better than the people who live there? And so that's why you have local officials, but Tallahassee going to have their way. We'll be zeroed out, and they'll be running with just a bunch of people coming off the street, don't know nothing, passing bills and helping out millionaires, that's what it's all about. One other one is scrapping property tax, wanting to impact the sense of service. Oh, yeah. Services like public safety, parks, clean water, depending on stable local funding, eliminating property tax, threaten the things that makes Florida a great place to live. Police Department, go to the pits, school, go, everything go to the pits. Let's see if I can get the big one on there. Who going, who going to take advantage of all of this while we still got to pay tax? Y'all know who going to get the break, right? Millionaires, that's who going to get the break. Not for us, not for, not for the citizens. It's for the developers and all those other boys giving them guys big money up there in Tallahassee. That's why they're coming up with this plan. So whenever it come back up again, if they ever get it on the ballot, we need to vote against it, because it don't benefit the community purely. They got a head of general, they'll tell you it's going to work. So anytime they tell you it's going to work, what? Just make it opposite. And when it's opposite, we are out of the loop. And fire department going, all, police department, all the services that go, it going to be gone because you can't, you can't vote.
We would have to appeal to the state for all those funds that we used to get through our own taxes.
Yeah, but still, you still going to get this little 40% out of the dollar. You still going to have to pay for that, but all the other stuff that have been there, big business getting, and they getting it free while you still got to pay. And that's the way they set up the government. There's a bunch of other stuff, since this meeting is moving smoothly, I'm going to just be quiet and I just invite the property president over out next week, and she'll put a little bit better. And if there's more information I have from Tallahassee, but I said we're moving real fast, everybody ready to go home, I'll just be kind and happy, and may I call, don't get a record here. Imagine if nobody got any to say. It's your treat.
It's your turn, sir. How much time do you have?
Yeah, you got it. You got it. I mean, she'll last hour. Yes, but she going to wrap it up. I'm telling you, going to break your record.
Yes, sir. Your turn.
I'm doing my.
I, too, attended the Florida League of Cities and attended some of the same courses and sessions that they did, and have really gained a lot of information, it was a good course. But the ones that I did do, the continuing education on, in ethics, I finished my four hours that I'm supposed to do every year. I don't know, do you all keep record of that? Do I need to send you proof of it?
No.
If you can, we will.
But the state keep records, only when we screw up.
I knew that, I knew that.
That's what they said, you got that.
Yeah, it'd be good for us to keep those.
That's for permission on ethics to handle.
Yeah, okay. Also attended the Cities 101, the Florida League of Cities 101, AI in action, practical tools for smarter local government, that was very interesting. Connect, collaborate, and cathenate, speed networking for elected officials and staff. Went to the president's welcome reception. Another session was navigating challenges and building effective board-city manager relationships, that was interesting also. Marketing your city, stories, strategies, and spotlight moments, and three other events, social session, solution session, smart, safety, transforming school zones, emotional intelligence for effective public leadership, and finally the inaugural celebration. And overall, I felt that the, this was the better Florida League of Cities event than the last two that I've been to, so I thought it was a good, that's it.
My other thing I forgot, this, I'll read the planning council meeting, I went last Thursday, and we had a report, we represent nine counties, Jefferson County, population is 15,020, poverty rate is 20.3%, children's poverty is 27.7%, 394 jobs, the wages and all this other stuff, but we need help, too. And I think we about, out of the nine counties, I think we about ranked by pools of, Livetown there, and they kind of represented. Tallahassee big league, so they, they got it. But Jefferson, then Walco, not Walco, Livetown, we on total pole.
Okay. I'm finished. Okay.
You don't wait, I won't say nothing.
We thank everyone for attending tonight, and this, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Aye, you got it.
We need to announce the meetings.
I'm sorry. Our next council meeting is October 7th.
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
Oh, yeah, the tentative budget hearing is going to be September 10th at 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, September 10th, 7:00 p.m. And then at that hearing at the end of that, we'll announce the final.
One other thing, real quick, I should have said that I will be out of town the 6th through the 17th of this month, so if y'all need anything before then, great. Okay.
Oh, shut up.
6th through 17th.
Okay. All right, did we have, we don't have anything in the morning, do we?
On that day?
Oh. Okay, well, I got something down here, so, thank you.
Maybe Wednesday, you could have spoken.
Everybody, okay, all right, so we have those, uh, meetings in place, and we will conduct ourselves accordingly, so, uh, without further ado, this meeting stands adjourned.
Boom.